To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Shang, will you open some word prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, God, we come to you tonight and we thank you for this opportunity that we have to be able to serve our community. We pray that God you would give us godly wisdom. Lord, we ask that you would continue to bless, Lord, each one that lives here. Lord, we thank you for our employees, those that have worked so hard over the last several days, keeping us safe on the roads. And God, we just pray that you continue to bless us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, welcome number one. Call is made in glory when we start with the roll call.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councilman Bates.
Here.
Councilman Pierce.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
All present.
All righty, is there any public comments pertaining to agenda items only? Hearing none, we'll move along to line item number five, consideration minutes, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. There was one little addition, it was just, well, Michael already made it, so.
Yes, sir.
That's all that I could find. Is there any other additions or corrections in the minutes?
What did you add?
The vice mayor, second page.
Apparently we appointed a new mayor instead of a vice mayor last month, so.
Did you have something, Luke?
Do we need to put that we were sworn in again? I don't know if that needs to be in the notes or not.
I can if you.
I mean, I don't care, I just didn't know if it was something that needed to be documented.
Michael generally thinks period.
And date, is it with the tenth or the ninth?
I don't know, was it?
Tuesday. You just might want to reflect that in minutes because it says December tenth.
Stephen Shepard. Yeah, I haven't gone into that.
Sorry.
No, that's why we had. Because I look at several seven minutes each month and sometimes they're going together. Yep, I changed that date for the night. Any other additions or corrections? We'll approve those with the corrections. Michael will get those changed. Move along to line item number seven, police report, Chief Hunt.
Several risks, several takes broke, and everybody's doing a job and spending an active month, so. Also, I had several officers come to me in the last couple months asking about raises, what the pay's not what, first of all, the county area, the other areas are. Job is raised due by their concerns. Not being said, I'm requesting a legitimate pay study to be done. Pay structure, pay scale, rank, experience, years of service should be included in the pay study, not just the starting pay of new officers. Experienced officer should get paid more money. Also included in the pay study, it should be including the health benefits, vacation time, sick time, that are equivalent to other police departments. I can't talk about any of the department, I'm here just for the police department. You know, the infrastructure of town is having to grow, need to expand the population coming off I forty. We have ninety percent of our stuff that we go on calls are at that interstate and people coming off the interstate, and it's going to involve drugs and guns. We always have now, by chance, we a lot of times have two of them, so that's a good thing. Sometimes we still just have one of them and not shift or twelve or shift, so they're really concerned about it. It causes more calls to per officer. We're having to back the county up quite a bit, and we get calls on I forty all the time. Also, I've contacted Jeff Stahl, he's a police management consultant, with him to ask for question information about this, about a pay study, pay scale and all that, and he advised me to send information as soon as he got it all gathered. But I'm, they're concerned about it, and I'm here to bring their concern to you. And all the departments in this county is either aware or both of us. Again, I know we're trying to keep up with everybody, every time we have a budget meeting, budget, you know, yearly budget, this, that, and another, but it seems like the system is going up every time, you know, it comes around, and, but I don't want to let off to fifteen miles down the road or five miles or whatever to another department because we're not keeping up with it. We did our good office, they did a good job, and I think saying about them right now, they're doing a good job. Now, I would like, you know, I could do a personal study on it, would cost us no money whatsoever, but I'm going to make sure that it's a, you know, it goes down as a legitimate study, you know, and I'd pay somebody, I don't know, whatever it is to do one, because I have no idea what to call it. Honestly, I don't see a reason to pay somebody, do a pay study when I can call them around and get the same thing, so. Stuff down there, five year, ten year, you know, right now, I can't even tell somebody that starts, you know, what if I stay here three years, what can I be making? Or if I make a sergeant or lieutenant, what will I be making once? You know, it kind of makes me look silly, so I can't answer that. But, you know, we basically, as long as start and pay, and then we'll from there. Start pays fine, but when you get people with three, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years of experience, or it should be a pay rank structural, but, so if you can't, it's harder to find experience. But being said, that's what I, that was my main concern, how to bring that to you.
Any questions or directions for Chief Hunt on that police report? If it's something, we need a point of police committee, I think, you know, everybody on his board that sit on the police committee, you know, it's something that we can talk about, or, you know, I don't think it needs to be solely laid upon the mayor, the chief, or CMFO, I think it needs to be input from, you know, everybody on the council, as we always have with everything else, you know, as far as the structures and things like that, so if y'all want to, you know, give us some direction on that, we'd be happy to.
Do we have a police committee or any?
But I think everything, everybody's set on it, didn't they? I think that's the way most of our committees are set up, except maybe the audit committee, but I'm sure we can reestablish that and have some workshops, or however you guys want to go about that.
I would like to get that information to him to ask, to see what they've got to say about everything, and he said he'd give it for quick, so I was anxious about it today, but he'd give it anytime, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't have said one tonight.
Gee, did MTS make any indication they could do the study?
He said they've done recent studies, so I'm thinking he might have some already, might establish, I don't know about within six months or whatever, you know.
Some of their, some of their studies knock it out of the park, and some of them, like on the food truck ordinances.
Do not.
Do not. It's just all who wants to respond, and I would say police is probably one of the heavy hitters, so.
Yeah, probably so.
Because they had like four of their whole statewide study on food trucks, and it wasn't.
It's hard to do a study on our size of department in the middle of I forty. It's hard to make that assumption of what, you know, we should be making instead of that. I know that, I'm not, you know, but, you know, on raids, about the list, actually, but they're making more than us. There's a couple more in I forty. Our biggest thing is we're getting a lot of traffic from I forty, hours, calls, we're getting guns, everything out there, drugs, the whole nine yards, so. A little town, quite town wonderful, quite town is quite town over here, quite town is quite town over here, because it's a constant thing anymore. And I, I know, I know y'all realize that, but if you're hanging out here at midnight and two, three o'clock in the morning, you might not realize it, but we organize this out, we have to do it all day, midnight, six in the morning, so. And we're getting calls during daytime too, traffic has come down I forty, set people out here, have to deal with them, they've all got multiple asthma issues and this, that, and other, and taking them to the hospital and all that stuff, so. I just want y'all to be aware of what's going on in, you know, police report. But I would like to have a place that it be done, or by y'all's permission to have me do one and get back to y'all.
Can we request that when that, whatever information that we give, not just pay benefits of what's employee, city, with also how they set up that pay? I mean, not just here's a starting, but when they do receive.
The whole structure.
The structure of when they get that certification and how that pay adjusts.
Yes, sir.
Do it right, inhabit in writing, to where you can at least have that for an officer.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of embarrassing to me when someone says, well, forty one, we start out with this, but.
Well, we've all agreed, we need structure, it's just one of those things that would keep, because I don't know the perfect way to go about that, and I mean, MTS might be able to come in, I don't know that there is a perfect thing.
But we're not the only ones, since COVID, as bad as I hate to say it, you speak to any other community leader, it is ever-changing, nobody has gotten handled on what that pay and adjustments, and because it's been very fluid for several years, but we definitely want to make, take care of our employees, it's not that we're trying to dismiss that, but make as informed of the decision.
I just want to see some structure done on it, and where I can actually come to the points that hate, so, you know, you start out this, in three years you can get to this, in five years you can get to this, or seven years you can get to that, and, but, you know, I kind of see, you know, trying to hire somebody or something like that, when we do, we're like, you start out with this, you know.
And that's something I've learned on this food truck deal, this ordinance is, there's no perfect guide, because usually you find an ordinance that somebody else has already created, and which is what we'll do with that one, and what we could possibly do this, but none of them are perfect, and it takes a lot of homework to get those, and then when you get done with it and you adopt it, then you miss something, so it's kind of one of those things that's ever-changing.
I understand it's not even going to be perfect, we've got to start somewhere to get it going.
Yeah, just Chief, let us know, and we'll set a meeting time, or, you know, sometime to get together, and of course, you know, advertise workshops, stuff like that. I think that's the kind of best way to handle it, instead of just a rapid meeting like tonight, we'll, you know, have a few workshops on them, see what's going on. Any other questions?
We also got three of them issued dates from the owner, that was totally getting to the spree, for our vehicles, when ours is down or in the shop or whatever, all we're going to do is, I think, some new tires on them, maybe new battery, and restripping. Everything else is on the vehicles, in the vehicle, and put a swap radio in palace to them, and everything else is better. All the interiors done on rocks, all that, so. Pleasant really to get rid of the actual palace, we need to get rid of them, they've lost a lot of money on them for like several years. And we're down here in our inbound lot, so, since we can, let's take them ready to go, we'll get them up to them.
Does he still hold the court, like the city court here?
Yes.
When is that? January twenty-something, and what, last month.
Last year with the award.
Yeah, it's possible going to have to start going every month. At one.
Who does the judge?
Judge Rooks.
I think right now we've got sixty-five schedules for court.
This room is practically full at the court.
Any other questions for Chief? Hearing none, we'll move along, Chief, please, fire report.
I don't have anything, unless y'all have any questions, they had picked up the last couple of months. That's really all I've got.
Any questions for Chief? Hearing none, before I forget, I do want to thank T-DOT, County Highway Department, and our crew here that done an excellent job with what the weather we had come through. It was an I, so we could work with them, so they did a great job. Move along to line item number nine, the financial statements and all that.
You guys should have them there in front of you if you have any questions.
Any questions for Michael on that? Hearing none, we'll go into city recorder report.
We'll just run that audited in right here if you don't, too.
Okay.
The audit is back, and Mr. Poole's actually here. Sean, if you don't care, you are.
Good evening. My name is John Poole, CPA hired to perform the state that required annual audit, which you guys have in front of you. If you don't mind tonight, I would actually like to talk about some numbers, and I apologize for taking, probably it'll take me four, five minutes to go through that, so. Tonight, if you turn to page nineteen, and as you turn to that page nineteen, when we say state required annual audit, I would kind of like remind this board that what it is we're doing, what we found, and then, like you said, kind of go into the numbers. So, in the audit, we're really trying to do three things. One, make sure we provide the state the financial information that they require in their oversight role, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Truth of the matter is, Michael does a good job with that, with auditors, we don't have spent a lot of time preparing the information that the states require, and I do believe the report includes that information. And so, the two things we do, and we think it would be most important to this board is, one, look to make sure the money that the town should be receiving, whether that's from the annual property tax, monthly sewer billings, police departments, their, their police fines, money, sales tax of the county, the various taxes that we get from the, from the state, and then whenever there are grants, and there were many grants in this report, making sure that we're getting those monies, and then once we receive those monies, that we're handing those monies in accordance with the town guidelines and state requirements. And I certainly feel like, you know, you're always going to have a property tax, you're going to have some folks that kind of get behind, town does a good job of tracking that and getting that information over to the county, so we think they're doing what needs to be done there, and the same thing with, with the sewer, once again, they kind of track delinquents and those kind of things, with being sewer charged, but turned off per se, but we are aware of who is delinquent and behind. So, I do feel like that we are getting the monies that we're supposed to be getting, and we didn't see anything that gave us any concern related to getting those funds. But then the third thing we do, which is probably most important to the citizens, and certainly to this board, is looking at the monies that this board gives to the department heads through the budget process, making sure that those funds are being spent only on town business, we certainly didn't see anything related to that, or we was kind of the support center. And then, then, once again, just looking to make sure that we're spending the monies in accordance with our policies, there were grants, and so we're making sure we're, the town is following those grant guidelines, when things are required to be bid, that we're bidding those amounts out appropriately, and, and then just using, I would just say, good business sense, and I am kind of glad to report that there isn't anything insignificant in the way that the monies aren't being spent. So, if you don't mind, let me run through some numbers. Page nineteen, this board is very aware that the state requires us to keep our monies in what's, they call them funds, different sets of books, and monies for one function, like in this case, sewer can't be used for other functions. The most critical, the one that the state really monitors the most, is any utility system, and we only have one here, that's the sewer system. This, this board is aware that there is a state law that says, when it comes to your sewer system, that your sewer system has to be profitable, at least every other year. In other words, with the sewer system, you can't have what they call losses two years in a row, and as we're going to see here on page nineteen, that is, that is not, not the case. There on nineteen, it'll show you the monies we took in, the revenues, expenses there kind of in the middle, some miscellaneous things, interest in, interest out, but the third line from the bottom is, is, it's a fancy word, it's net change in net position. That's just government utilities way of saying profit loss. You can see that that amount was plus one hundred seventy-one thousand, terrific. I will just mention real quick, that number right up above it that says capital contributions, that's grants, the state doesn't include it, so in their mind, the surplus is about a hundred twenty buck. The important thing is, and the good news is, is it's above a dollar, and so we don't have any concerns going forward in twenty-four. We met the financial threshold of profitability for that, which is great. Let me just have you flip one page back to page eighteen, just to give you an indication. Where page nineteen, there's monies in, monies out, page eighteen is going to be, kind of referred to about, it's what we own and what we own, and I just kind of want to, that top number there, cash and cash equivalents, that's money in checking accounts and LGI, the savings accounts, and you can see that's a million two, terrific. If you compare that to the previous page, where we looked at expenses, we basically spend about four hundred thousand dollars a year, so we have a couple of years worth of operating expenses in the bank account. This board is very aware, though, that most of this money is going to be spent on repairing and rehabbing and increasing the utility lines, but it is nice to know that you have one point two there in, in the utility. One other item I just kind of want to point on this page, if you go down about three, four, there's going to be a line that says long-term debt. The sewer, and you can see that, that number is a little bit over two million, that just basically says that the sewer system as of June twenty-fourth, that two million dollars in debt. Once again, for a city our size, that serves a number of customers, we have, that is not an abnormal amount of debt, that's a very reasonable amount of debt, and certainly we have been making those debt payments, and once again, based on the cash amount, if the town so desired, they could repay some debt, I don't recommend that you do that, just based on the interest rates and what we're getting now, but, once again, so, I guess I've talked a lot to say this, the sewer system is in pretty good shape financially. So, let's quickly talk, I never quickly talk, but let's talk about the others, but page sixteen, the other three sets of books that, that the town has are there on page sixteen, there's three of a columns. The general fund, that's the one that we're most familiar with, that's where the property tax money goes, and the sales tax money, and the state taxes, and those kind of things that we, we receive, and you can see there, starting at the top, revenues two point one, we spent one point seven, and so in this general fund, there was a surplus of three hundred five thousand dollars during the year. If you were to go and look at last year, the year ending June third, twenty-four, you would see very similar numbers. So, the good news is, as even the chief mentioned, we're continuing to grow, monies are coming in, it's nice to see that there were, are surpluses the last couple of years. Unlike the sewer fund that we talked about a minute ago, there is no requirement that you have to show a surplus in these funds, and you could technically spend more money than you're bringing in for many years until you literally almost ran out of money. Now, once again, that's nowhere near where grateful is, but just to say that it isn't like the sewer fund where you have to show a profit. Okay. So, that middle column is, is just, we get some special monies from the state, gasoline taxes, and you can see revenues at the top, and then we did some significant paving right toward the end of the year, and so we actually spent more than we took in. Once again, that's what those monies are there for, you save, save, save for a few years, and then you, you know, when paving comes appropriate, you do. That's what we did. And then there is a small drug fund, which once again, not much activity there. So, you can see for the, that total column, you can see there, for everything is a whole surplus of one hundred seventeen thousand dollars, which once again, that is terrific. One more number I just want to show you, go back two more pages to page fourteen, it's going to kind of be the same thing, we just talked about monies coming in and out of these non-utility funds, and then here on page fourteen, it's going to show you the amount of money, once again, that top line, you know, it says there that cash, cash equivalents, checking, savings accounts, three point seven million dollars, once again, you compare that to the amount of money we spent last year, we basically had two years worth of operating expenses there in the general fund. Once again, ladies say that that is prison. So, once again, I would say the same thing, the sewer fund, your finances as a whole are in really good shape, there aren't really, as your auditor, any concerns that we have. I do just want to mention that this report has been filed with the state, it is on the comptroller's website. My name and phone number is on page one of this report, if there's ever a member of this board that's going to talk to me directly, feel free to call. Once again, certainly citizens can do the same. Just to say, want to say thanks to Michael, appreciate it, it was easy doing this audit, I know you guys do financial reports, one of the things you do as auditors is look at those financial reports to make sure that the information he shared with you is kind of what we're seeing, and that would certainly be helpful. Here, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask if there, if anyone has any questions, I know you're just now receiving this, but if that is something that's allowed, then I'll ask that.
Yes, sir.
And if there are any questions, then I'll say thank you, glad to be working with you.
So, this, I guess my one question, this is June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah, July twenty-three to June twenty-four, yes, sir.
Okay.
What happens if you're not profitable in the sewer for two years in a row?
Okay, so what would happen, if you were, and I'm going to look at Michael and see if he remembers, I think this happened to us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What happens if we get a letter from the oversight board, waste water board, and they basically say, hey, what's going on? Why are you showing losses? We respond back to them, the truth of the matter is, they're going to make you go up on rates. I mean, once again, if for some reason we found that, hey, there's a way more profitable way to do things, if we did this initiative, you might get the review board to approve that, but the reality is, in ninety-nine percent of cases, probably, you're going to have to go.
They recommended us a rate study, which hadn't been done in a while, an official one, and that's what we did at the time, was, was raised, sewer rates that hadn't been raised in, in years, so.
And had we not done that, the state would have set the rates for us.
Right, exactly. If this board will not take action, the state will take action for us, and they would not set a reasonable rate, they would set a rate way more than would actually be needed, but once again, the town, as a member of the town, certainly took appropriate action, and I would certainly believe they would do so.
And while Mr. Poole is here, I mean, he can explain it better than anybody else, but the sewer will not look as good next year as it does this year. We have some grants that are cycling through with those grants. I can't explain it, but you can't show it here, and have to show it here, so just, we hope that we can achieve that number, but we know realistically, we're not going to achieve that number next year, so.
And I think, I think what the mayor is referring to, for the, for the utility fund, we have to use full business accounting, as opposed to these non-utility funds, which uses a special kind of accounting to start government accounting, but in full accrual accounting, there's this thing, whenever we refurbish a pump, or install a new line, it's something called a fixed asset, an asset, and then you have to depreciate, so in other words, like if we put in a hundred thousand dollar line, we don't take a hundred thousand dollar hit on that page nineteen that we were talking about. What we do is, let's say that we say that line's from the last ten years, we would have to charge ourselves ten thousand dollars a year in depreciation to go from that hundred thousand, ninety thousand, and that's where it gets so hard to be profitable, because we, we have to do these big projects, and even sometimes we're given the monies, but because of this thing called depreciation, that's kind of where it bites us in the.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Why is it better to hold the long-term debt instead of paying down your long-term debt?
I literally think that the rates we're getting on our savings accounts are better than the rates we're getting on our debt, and I'm going to sit here and look here for it, because some of the debt money we got is, is from the state, and those interest rates were significantly, if you could say.
So, it might not always be that.
That's true, oh, absolutely, and that's something we, and just as you're off, that's something we're always talking, we're always talking about, and I'm always on Michael's case, to make sure that we're money management the best we can, and once again, he and I are going to disagree sometimes, because he actually has to write the checks, I don't have to worry about it if the checks are going to clear because we've put too many, too much money in savings, but yeah, one of the things I can tell you, that is certainly a conversation that we have, and sometimes the mayor's involved in those. have, and sometimes the mayor's involved in those, about making sure that the town is using citizens' money, you know, so it's not just sitting there doing nothing, yes, sir.
We've asked for Mr. Poole that same question, we asked the rate study people the same question, government doesn't work like we do. That was my first thing, pay that thing off, pay whatever you can pay off, but that's not what the auditors recommend, so.
You're making more money on your savings than what you're paying in interest.
Yes. And then also, just, I just want to add this one, we have a rural development loan. One of the things the rural development loan does is it puts a fence around your customers. If you have a rural development loan, you, a competing city, Partridge, whoever else it may be, can come in, if there's a new development in your area, and say, hey, we can service your customers better. Because if we didn't have that rural development loan, those things are possible now. The Rutherford County, that goes on a lot there. But that rural development loan, once again, at a lower interest, does provide a little protection, that we don't have to worry about somebody trying to sneak in and say, hey, we can service them better than they can state, let us take them over. We don't have to worry about that. Like I said, not as big a concern here, but certainly a couple of counties over, that's an issue. Good question, thank you. Thank you for your time, sir, to talk some more.
As always, Mr. Poole is liable, I'm sure his number's in here, if not, we can get it for you, he can explain this more in depth. Like I said, we just received it, and I can't imagine y'all would have questions right now, so. If not hearing any, we'll move along to new business.
Can we approve this?
Oh, yes, we need, yes, we do need a motion to approve this audit.
So, Lou.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, or roll call?
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank y'all for that. Anything else, Michael?
No.
Or the sewer reports?
Right now.
All right, we'll move along to new business, y'all hang with me on this, there's a little bit of flipping back and forth. Item number one, zoning ordinance amendment, two zero two five zero one one three, zoning amendment, minimum site plan requirements for multi-residential, commercial, and industrial developments. First reading, something the planning commission has looked into. Generally, site plan review is done by building inspectors, you can't find a building inspector in the state that will do that. This is the way the planning commission has a, kind of a hand in saying what these site developments look like, make sure that they're following our regulations. It's, basically, they've got a plot of land, they're showing us the building, kind of what's around it, what it's going to look like, and then we can make sure that they, you know, go by our rules on that. Like I said, this was a recommendation by the planning commission, now this is not in residential, other than multifamily residential, it's just multifamily, commercial, and industrial. If we pass this tonight, there'll be a second hearing and a public hearing next month at a regular scheduled meeting. I would entertain a motion to adopt that amendment.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Sir, a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Like I say, on page, on the second page of that amendment, it basically shows a layout of kind of what we are requiring, and this is nothing that has to be engineered. This is just some criteria that the planning commission thought that the developers should meet, so it lays that out. Like I say, you can review that, you know, before passing it next month. Is there any further questions on that? Hearing none, or roll call?
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
All ready, thank y'all for that. Like I say, we'll have a second hearing, second reading, public hearing next month. Next one is community development block grant, this is resolution two zero two five zero one one three, CDBG. I told you guys about this, and we're going through the steps about applying for this grant, recently found out Wednesday of last week, hour six. Probably worse than zero. We're going to, I want you guys to adopt this, I've got a meeting in football with some of the grant writers on this. I don't, or the staff of Overcome Development District, through this task, because of what it takes to get this right now. But I'm going to have that talk with them, but this is part of the procedure. We're going to go ahead and, you know, adopt this, you know, with your, with you adopting it, but I would, what I'm saying is, if, you know, there's a lot of phone calls, there's a lot of knocking on doors, that this staff and our staff would have to do, and I just don't know that, I think out of two hundred and something surveys last time, I think we had a twenty percent success rate on those surveys, nobody fills those surveys out, which hurts us, you know. We can't, we asked about an online, or Survey Monkey, or something like that, that people would do, and that's not allowable in this grant. So, I would like to report back to y'all, I would like to pass this resolution tonight, let me talk with Ms. Megan, Overcome Development, to see if we need to proceed, any further. I just hate to go through all that work, and it, you know, knowing we're probably not going to get any. Most of the criteria, we don't meet upfront, as far as pay, or as far as our income and things, as far as our residence. So, I would ask to adopt this resolution, and then I'll dig more into it before.
Got a question. Do you know what kind of property they?
What are you looking for, the replacement property?
I think it's up to four hundred.
I think it's four hundred twenty thousand.
Yeah, and we're liable for about twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Twenty, twenty-two percent, which that would have to be, you know, budgeted with us, but like I say.
How old is it on that town?
I was on this twenty, twenty-four years. I think that was the last one that John purchased, used.
And the one before that was old sixty-seven, sixty-eight, I'm not sure. I'm glad that we have, act on this.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? I will say that I want to have a talk with it, and I'll report back to you guys on that. Y'all know this is part that was rushed through, you know, once they put it out, they want the response right then, that's why, you know, the public hearing, there were some questions, go, why we have the public hearing so fast? That's not up to us, that's up to the federal government, how their guidelines are. Hearing no questions or discussion, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank y'all on that, we'll move along to resolution two zero two five zero one zero three, annexation request. In your packets, there is a request for annexation, and I will, this is step one, but I'll let Mr. Winkler kind of.
There is a piece of property that the owner is asking to annex. What's the street?
It's on Valley.
Valley, Valley. And the first, that piece of property is part of another, but the part to be annexed is outside of your urban growth plan. So the first thing you have to do is amend your urban growth plan, and to include. Normally, that requires community involvement with the county and some other things, but three requirements allow it to be amended without that, just by resolution that you've got here today. Number one, the tract is continued to a tract of land that has the same owner and is already within the city limits. It is, this is part of a, this is one tract, it's part of a bigger tract. Second, the tract has been provided water and sewer services, and it is, the one that's already in it is. And then finally, the owner by notarized petition consents to it being included, so there's just one owner and that consented. So, all you're doing tonight is amending your urban growth plan to include this parcel, of a larger parcel, and after that, you'll have a resolution to actually annex it, that has to have a plan of services, it's another place along with it, this is step one.
Jamie, is this the land that we're thinking about, is that on the west side of the power lines? This power lines?
It's right, it's the land behind where Mr. Jack Deller used to act. Is that land?
Yeah, part of that land is in city limits, part of it's not, kind of doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but, you know, they're basically cleaning that up, you know, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with some of the owners, but, you know, they just, they won't be able to be in the city limits and get those services, you know, that the rest of the citizens enjoy, and it's a good time for us to expand our boundary a little bit, because it's getting harder to do every day.
And it also makes it subject to your zone.
Also, they did request a zoning M1 on that, I don't know if we need, it's in the writing there.
It is.
So that's a multifamily and commercial, or multi-use residential, commercial.
What's the current property that, what zone is it in, that they currently own?
Part of it, it's, looks like all are R1 right now. Well, they actually own this piece of property, which is C2, and then they own these lots that are in the city limits, which is an R1. So, with an M1, they could do pretty much what they wanted to, there as far as commercial or residential. And it's this hunk here. So it touches R1 and C1, and C2.
Is that the only spot that they own outside of the city?
Yes.
Like, it's continuous, yeah, I didn't know if they, like, owned the parcels around that.
No.
Has to touch.
How much more land is that?
Sixty-four acres, sixty, sixty acres, and, I think, yep, it says there in second paragraph, sixty point six acres.
We are, this request is to annex that, the reason, no?
The request, it will be, but the only thing this does is amend your urban growth plan to say we can't.
Okay, so we're not rezoning, we're not?
You're not, you're not even annexing, because you're just saying, for it to even be possible, it's got to be within your urban growth plan.
To make sure.
Multiple steps.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You'll have more opportunity for questions and inquiries and all that before.
Perfect. I just don't want to make a decision tonight that says, we've made a decision that no way.
You can't even, you can't even put yourself in a position to make a decision unless you do this first step.
Okay, this is just the possibility of increasing it to the possibility of adding, it just includes it in your plan.
It's all me. Yeah, we thought it was going to be a longer process than what it is, it's very confusing, and if anybody understands it, send them our way, because we'll be glad to take notes from them.
Okay.
So I would like a motion on that resolution.
I've got one question before we do it. What cost is this going to come to the city, any?
We will gain.
You'll gain tax dollars if the annexation goes through. Cost to do what you're going to do tonight is zero.
Yep.
Paying compared to the resolution, but, the, you would have the tax, of course, benefits of that, but you would also, I guess the burden would be increased power protection, increased police protection, garbage, that type.
Basically, in the, toward the bottom of that resolution, or ladder from BGBR, it lists one, two, three, four, those are basically the advantages of doing this, when it's finalized.
Yep, I just didn't know if there's any major disadvantages.
Other than growing, or something, you know, somebody come up with on Facebook.
Yeah.
You've got to provide services, you've got to protect them.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to protect, we've got to reach, go straight to road when it snows, I mean, you know, it's just growing a little bit. I want, would entertain a motion on that annexation request resolution. Second?
Second.
Any further questions or concerns? There'll be more down the road, so y'all just be prepared, we'll entertain all the questions. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All ready, I did say hang with me. The thoroughfare plan, this is recommended from the planning commission. Y'all have a black and white, this really doesn't affect as far as the council much, if you've been on the planning commission much, you know that the planning commission is a whole other animal, so, Mr. Shane, he has an example in color there, it does show, and basically what it does, it identifies our major roads, collector roads, and what that does is affects setbacks for buildings and things like that. So, Mr. Lee, Tommy Lee, he's our staff planner, you know, he, we're updating things in our ordinances and subdivision regulations, things like that, this is just another step in that. So this is just identifying our roads, I would entertain a motion just to adopt this corns of major thoroughfare plan. Sir, a second?
Second.
Hearing, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, or roll call?
Vice Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Pierce.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All ready, thank y'all for that. With us passing that, I will probably, probably be next week, next month or the month after, we'll bring a road list. It's something that we don't have here, and that we really need. It defines each road, and I don't know as far as about widths and lengths, but Tommy Lee, our staff planner, he's going to help us with that. We've already, Chief LaFever and his crew's already went out and got the, you know, all the names of the roads and the links, but we, I think he's going to draw us up a map and stuff of that, so, in the near future, we'll be, we'll be bringing that back to you guys.
Is that going to be the proper name of this corns of major thoroughfare?
Thoroughfare.
Fair plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It's on that top of the thing you sent out, that's Tommy Lee's definition.
Okay.
Is there any more new business? I don't think I've skipped anything. Does anybody else have any new business?
I don't.
Okay.
I haven't even thought about this, but, right now, we're working twelve-hour shifts, two twelve-hour shifts a day. Eight shifts, eight shifts a day. On holidays, right now, we're only getting eight-hour pay day on a holiday, and we're working twelve hours. Whoever works, we're only getting eight hours holiday, just like the other four in the city. But we're actually working four more hours per hour. I always got to be through the.
Policy change?
Policy transition, or whatever.
We have to change the personnel policy.
That we actually do the morning eight hours, and make it twelve hours, you know, whether you pay for the holiday, instead of just the night, eight-hour holiday, of working twelve hours. Nobody else in the city does.
Nobody else has that option?
Yeah, nobody has that option.
I'm sure that's right.
Yeah, nobody has that option, I mean, we, we've got a couple of twenty-four hours, nobody else has to do that. I would like to see if y'all would make a policy update, or whatever, that would pay the officer who worked twelve hours, had four more hours on that shift, or whatever they had to work.
The way it's set up now, they get their twelve-hour pay, plus eight hours of holiday pay, correct?
Okay.
And that's up to the council, don't.
Something fair.
So is there scheduled for that?
And that's fine, we'll have to update personnel policy if they read in the public hearing.
There's a schedule for that.
And that's what I'm saying, I didn't, do we need to contact roads on that, or?
No, it's in the personnel policy, we'll have to update that ordinance.
Okay. And that's something else, if we're going to do it, we need to look through it again and.
Yeah.
See if there's anything else that needs updating, because y'all remember the procedure we went through the last time on that, it was fun. But, I mean, I don't think that's something that's going to happen tonight or next month, but yes, if that's something y'all want to tackle.
Do I loop that into the discussion with the increase in pay?
That would be fine.
And that's something that the rest of the department is, if there's something that needs to be changed, that's, y'all guys know, y'all are here, that's the time.
I can almost speak with the police department, I keep, you know, I got, I'm basically half the employees, police department, so, I can almost speak with my half. But everybody else, um, has work day or night, and we have to pull twenty-four-hour day to cover service.
How many holidays would that affect that would be?
Thirteen or fourteen.
Fourteen, I think.
Whatever, yeah, it's thirteen or fourteen.
Is that standard across other police departments?
It is.
And that's something that we would need to adjust in the budget also.
Yeah. I, I don't know if it's a, I don't know what issue or whatever, but I, I know that, you know, our policy only does eight hours.
And that policy was basically, I think it was set before.
Before he changed this.
Well, I try to have two, you know, at least that, and maybe one during the day or.
Off the top of my head, I think that was, policy was set before they swapped to the twelve hours.
It was.
I'm not gonna say that was, more likely that's what this was.
Three eight-hour shifts and, you know, we really ain't that many people run eight, three eight-hour shifts. So it just does better at twelve and twelve.
And I don't, I don't think it'd be a labor force issue, they're getting paid for the extra time.
They are getting paid the straight time.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I don't know how that works, but, uh, I, I think it would be fair to pay them the extra four hours and, you know, after the eight for the holiday.
Well, are they actually working twelve hours of the holiday? I mean, that's questions that can be asked later because they're working from six to six, you're only working part of that day. Uh, that's a question we can bring up.
Who knows if it follows on?
Right, well.
You know, if they get paid for the six hours or get.
Let's work that out in a workshop, I should have never brought that up, because it just something hit me, so let's go on to the next.
Still, still a twenty-four hour.
I think that loud a lot of times. Uh, however you guys wanna do it, if you wanna discuss it at the same time, once he brings back the, uh, we'll go through and the supervisors can go through the policy again and see if there's either. Because I mean, that's the only time to change it, might as well do it all at once when you do it, so.
Because that can also be included, you know, we're asking about the structure of how their pay is. That could also be part of the benefits or, you know, see how other people, other departments are handling it.
Yeah. All righty, any other new business?
We would include and said a workshop since this has gotten bigger.
Yeah, and we don't need to do it with the food truck workshop either, because I've got that, I was gonna bring that up.
Want to wait until the chief gets some information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let me get my workshop in first.
Okay.
Uh, well, other new business, I was gonna say, you know, food truck workshop, Stacy couldn't be here tonight. Uh, I really wanted her here in the food truck discussion. I will have hopefully that ready next time. We don't have a meeting, we'll have a public hearing before next month's meeting. Uh, do y'all want to try to tackle that before next meeting? Uh, it'd be brief, probably thirty minutes, we'll take care of just the overview. I'm gonna send you, uh, the town of Tallahassee ordinance and some of the questions that I have. And I need you guys to read that and kind of go over that and see what we like. Also, October thirteenth is Columbus Day, y'all need to be thinking about when y'all wanna move that day. Uh, that meeting too, I know, I think that hits at fall break by the same time. Y'all can get back with me if y'all wanna leave at five thirty for the food truck ordinance workshop. I don't have any other old business, anybody else having any old business? There is no audit commit, committee meeting, is there any more business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Sir, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving adjourned. I feel there'd be a lot of input in that.